Good evening. Welcome, I'd like to call our June 20th, 2019 Town Council meeting to order. We have a few things to do this evening and Vice Mayor Cook is going to assist us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you Mayor. If I can have Trevor and Tyson, if you can come over here next to me. We have two scouts, but they're actually two special scouts because their dad has a wonderful thing tonight, but we'll talk about that later. So what we normally do is we ask the scouts to tell us their name and their PAC. So we'll ask them.
I'm Trevor and 403. Tyson, 403.
Well, congratulations, well, thank you very much for, you know, being part of the scout program. If we can all stand and we'll have Trevor lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. As a gift, we have for both of you, a pocket Constitution. In fact, let me get two more for your other sisters here and some of your other friends. And if you can give them, that'll be great. Having a round of applause for Trevor and Tyson, thank you.
Thank you. Is Pastor, oh, I see you Pastor Thor. Pastor Thor Strandholt will offer our invocation this evening. Pastor Thor is from Valor Christian Center. They're right there on Warner and Higley and they do amazing work, especially with our veterans.
Testing. Oh, there we are. Okay, hallelujah. Well, thank you so much Mayor Daniels and rest of the council for having me back once again, I really appreciate it. And I want to be sure and say thank you to everybody that's here for being here and let's go ahead and pray. Lord, thank you for giving us a country and a city where we are free to worship and praise you, the Creator of all. Thank you for giving us a town council that cares for the future of its families and its businesses and for the support staff as well. Lord, give them all wisdom and all the decisions that have to be made here tonight. And Lord, we'll be careful to give you all the praise, all the honor and all the glory for it. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor. The clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor. Councilmember Amy Entes.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you Lisa. At this time, we do have one recognition and our councilmember Anderson will assist.
Would you join me up here? Susanna is our Assistant Town Engineer. One thing that makes us very happy as a council and you as citizens of the community is saving money any way we can. And Susanna was engaged in a process of using a methodology that we call value engineering that was associated with our public safety training facility and literally saved the town millions of dollars. And I'm going to let her explain the whole process of what value engineering is and how she used that. But tonight, we want to congratulate her for that, for the use of that and for winning the Best Paper Award. I'll have her explain that a little bit too, if you would Susanna.
Thank you, good evening. And thank you very much for recognizing me this evening, what an honor. This process is really something that I was challenged with when I first came on board as the capital improvement program manager, to come up with some opportunities where we could work as a team with our police and fire group as well as our designers and contractors to develop the public safety training facility. The only way that I knew how to do that in a quick timeframe that we needed to meet that was to engage this value engineering. And value engineering is really not just cutting scope and cost, but it is identifying areas where we can get the best quality for the best value. And we brought in a lady named Renee Hoekstra to work with the team very, very, very early in the process of design. We spent three days, or they spent three days, actually going through and vetting the entire public safety facility and came up with some grand designs that basically carried through to where we're at today in the building. And really, it's a commendation to the team that came together to work really hard to focus and make that happen. And that's what value engineering does. So this society that we got the paper on, I was able to help with Renee in writing a paper that identified the greatness of that event that we did early on in that and we were awarded that. Value engineering is a society here in America and they go internationally actually, they have about 1,500 members of people that do nothing more than value engineering. So for us to be able to show that we had this great opportunity and we took it and utilized our methodology and it's been such a great success is really an honor in itself. So, thank you very much for that recognition.
We're proud to have you on our team. At this time, we do have one request to speak from our citizen.
Mayor, thank you. We'd like to invite Joe Guusik to the podium. If you can identify yourself and place a resident, we'll allow you to share with us
Joe Guusik, Gilroy resident. Mayor Daniels, fellow talent, councilmembers, all Gilbert staff, residents and guests of our beautiful community. As I always tell you, I'm the lovable, slightly annoying American, I'm the education Lorax. We all know who Tim Allen is. Tim Allen is a dick. Surely, you want me to be frank with you. I'm not Shirley and if you wanted to look up my address with the police chief, I'm not Frank either. What I was, was just honest with you. And there's a difference between being honest and being truthful. And over the past couple of years, each and every time we come to the budget, we seem to have honest conversations, but not always truthful ones. So I speak tonight to make sure that when we're having these conversations, that we're listening, not to respond, but to understand. There is a statute that long ago was put in place, in fact, it's in the Constitution, it requires you to set a budget limit. Doesn't require you to spend it all, but it is necessary for you to do. And as it is stated very clearly in there, you have to make sure that you have room in that budget, so that you make sure that each and every single year, that you balance your budget. And I think that you do that, as compared to what we have at our state level. Yes, they're being honest. We have a balanced budget, but with an asterisk. One with a $930 million rollover. That if they were to follow GAAP accounting, they would have to come up with $930 million to balance the budget. I share that with you because I want to make sure that when we have this conversation as we go back and forth, that there's a clear expectation from me. I'm one of your, and I don't like to use the term, but I will say it, I'm one of your bosses. Patrick isn't. None of the rest of the staff is your boss. And hopefully, the rest of the community will understand that too, that we want truthful conversations. So you understand, real quickly, I'll share it with you, and a lawyer should understand this as well. Honesty and truthfulness are not the same thing. Being honest means not telling lies. Being truthful means actively making known all the full truth of a matter. So when we have these discussions, I would appreciate going forward, that we are truthful in the overall explanation of what's happening. So that we make sure that we balance our budgets and that we make sure that we hit our numbers each and every single time. I do, once again, thank you for not spending all the budget. Thank you.
That moves us to our consent agenda and we have one particular item we'd like to pull to the front of our consent agenda, vote on that separately and then execute another document associated with that. So Agenda Item 3A.
Yes Mayor, we'd like to move 3A to the front before we go through the rest of the consent calendar. So, what I'd like to do is read this. This is an agreement, consider the approval of the employment agreement and the number stated 139001238 with David M. Kutchin Jr. as the presiding judge with an effective date of June 21st, 2019 through June 30th of 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. And so at this time, we get to do the swearing in. Judge Kutchin is here and I think he has some fan club here as well. So we'll go ahead and do that now. And Judge, if you and your family want to come up, I'll meet you down there. All right, yep, raise your right hand, you knew what to do. Excellent. You've done this maybe a few times. We're excited to have you on board. I know it's been a long process to get here, but we're really grateful that you're here and it's exciting to do this.
Thank you.
I state your name.
I, David Michael Kutchin Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
And the ordinances of the town of Gilbert.
And the ordinances of the town of Gilbert.
Maricopa County, Arizona.
Maricopa County, Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of the presiding judge.
Of the office of the presiding judge.
Of the Gilbert Municipal Court.
Of the Gilbert Municipal Court.
In Gilbert, Arizona.
In Gilbert, Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. As Judge Kutchin signs that, and I loved hearing the cheers, I saw some of those recognized faces out there, that was awesome. I'll ask him if he wants to say a few words, might be an appropriate time since he has family and friends here and future, well, I guess, starting right now, now you're their boss, so you have them here too.
What if I don't want to say anything? That's how I feel, but yeah, right. Well, thank you very much. I'm excited, really excited about this new venture. So, excited to continue to work with so many good people that we have in the court and Prosecutor's Office, Police Department, all over the town of Gilbert that we rub shoulders with on a daily basis. So, I'm grateful for their support and it means a lot to have many of them here tonight. They had things to do and made a sacrifice to be here. The same can be said for my family and friends and wouldn't be anywhere near this position or even where I've been for the last decade or anywhere, even before that, without my family, my parents, my wife, especially my wife. I'm really grateful for her and all that she lends to me and to our family. She is the most selfless individual I know and makes it easy to be her husband, if you will, because she carries a lot of weight in our family. But I'm grateful for this new chapter, I'm grateful for the opportunity that I'll have to work closely with the town of Gilbert, the officials here behind me and as we continue to move the court forward and make Gilbert proud.
The Kutchin family and friends, this is probably the best time for you guys to, unless you want to stay, you're more than welcome. But the rest of the business starts now, so. Thank you all for being here. It's nice to see so much support. Some comfy seats in the front if anybody wants to move up. All right, we will proceed with the rest of our agenda. Vice Mayor, do assist with the consent.
Yes, thank you Mayor. We're going to pull Agenda Item 3 as a separate vote. With that, I move that we approve Agenda Items 4 through 12. Agenda Item 13 with the changes that were given to us on the DIAS. Chris, do I actually need to read what the changes are? Because it said additional language was attached to the, added language that was added to the contract, would that be enough? Okay, we'll add that in the motion. And then Agenda Items 14 through 30 as well as 12A, 19A, 19B, 20A, 29A, and 25A. I believe I got all of them in that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 3. Mayor, I move to approve item number 3.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 5-1 vote, thank you. That moves us to our public hearing items. Are there any requests from the council or the public on public hearing items?
37.
7? Okay. Just 37 or 36 also? Do you want to do both? 36 is removing the MFRC. Thank you. All right, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35 and close the public hearing on those Agenda Items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve Agenda Items 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35.
We have a motion, a second by Councilmember Ray. Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. I keep having to count. I think I could just take 7 minus 1 really easily, but I'm so used to 7 something. All right, thank you. All right, we will open the public hearing. I'm going to open it on both of these Agenda Items, 36 and 37.
Mayor, thank you. Item 36 is an item that we've been talking about for quite some time, is whether or not to remove the opportunity to do a conditional use permit to include multifamily within regional commercial zoning. And staff is recommending that we remove that and I agree with that, I just didn't know if there was any conversation that anybody wanted to have or if anybody had any questions about this or how this will work going forward, if anybody had anything that the staff, they needed staff to add.
I just have one, actually, it's more of a comment than a question, but it has to do with the graphic that you sent us about the different percentages of land uses in town, the zoning. I don't know that, as we consider this change tonight, I'm not really concerned about multifamily, but as we did the breakout in the zoning districts, the general rule of thumb that we follow, at least I have for years, is that the breakdown of land uses in a community should be about 70% residential, about 10%, commercial about 10% or so in the business park and industrial, and then the balance in the public land use category. The only thing that I'm concerned about in this, which doesn't have as much to do with what we're doing tonight, but the only thing I was concerned about is that our industrial and business park or office category is now at about 7.5% according to that table. That concerns me as we have more and more cases that come before us. If they're in an industrial zone or a business park zoning district and there are requests in the future to change that, I'd be very reluctant to do that because we're becoming closer and closer to a pure bedroom community the more we give up that industrial and business park zoning district. And so that's just a comment I wanted to make, is we're getting a little bit out of balance and I think that's why we need to be careful when we're considering changes from those categories into residential or other categories.
Mayor, I'll make one more follow-up comment on the multifamily and regional commercial. A lot of people don't always understand that multifamily can still be included in regional commercial as long as there is non-residential on the first floor of the building, they are still able to build multifamily within regional commercial. And the density is not set on that either, it's basically however much they can fit to build. Of course, they'd still have to go through design review and all of that within the community, but I think this is the right way to go. I was never a huge fan of the conditional use permit in this situation and I look forward to the rest of discussion on the next item. I would go ahead and move to approve that item number 36 if there's no more discussion.
One more minute, I just wanted to just state and thank staff. Our goal is to make the process much more clear for our residents, but also for those who sit both on planning and on council. And sometimes, when items came before us, and there's always been some discrepancy about whether a conditional use permit was a right or whether it was a privilege, there was always like some sort of confusion, I think, both from council planning staff and really from some of our landowners and developers and even town staff. And so, I feel like this very much creates a streamlined and very clear process that helps our residents especially to understand. A lot of times when we would have this room filled with residents who are upset about a multifamily project that was going into a regional commercial, they didn't understand the threshold that we had to meet as a council. So this is a much more clear and straightforward process. I also recognize that for some of our owners and developers, that this makes maybe something that they wanted to do a little bit more difficult. And I understand that component of it, but I do think that this is the most clear and open way for us to do this. So, I'm grateful to staff and some of the developers actually helped us and assisted us in a stakeholders group to ensure that we were doing this in a way that was helpful to them in some ways as well. So, thank you to everyone who's participated in that process. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing on Agenda Item 36 and entertain a motion.
I move to approve item 36.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 5-1 vote. Thanks for doing that Jordan, so that I had to count again, 5-1, thank you. All right, that moves us to Agenda Item 37. I've already opened the public hearing. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you Mayor. My concern with this item is the idea of making the requirement for open space less than it currently is. And so, I don't know where the rest of the council sits on this. My position would be that I'm okay with Item 37 so long as we change it to keep the open space requirement the same as it is today. And with that, I'm willing to support it, otherwise, I don't want to support this. I get the idea of why we're doing this. One of the things that sets Gilbert apart from other surrounding communities and other communities within the state is the amount of open space that we have. And you can tell a difference when you're in Gilbert versus other communities and I want to keep that open space feel as much as possible. And so, I'm of the, my preference is to keep that at 40%.
Okay, thank you. Is Sidney here? Sidney, not to call you out, but would you mind coming to the podium? Is there any background information, additional information that we would need to know about the reason for that change within this item? Can you clarify for us?
Mayor Daniels, so that number was taken based off of a approximation of other developments within Gilbert that are higher density currently, so these were achieved through either existing ordinances or through PAD overlays, which permit higher density for certain specific types of uses such as affordable housing or senior living. So that number was taken from those developments and an average was concluded from there that was approximately 25. This was also compared against some case studies from different developments within the valley and some larger ones across the nation, but very few mostly in the valley based off of developments in between 25 to 50 dwelling units an acre. So that's how we completed that number for it. It is less than our existing zoning districts, but again, this is a new zoning district, so that is why we decided with the higher density that it'd be more achievable with 25% for the open space.
I think the easiest way to say this is this zoning category is 25 to 50 units per acre. If we keep it at the 40%, it will be difficult for developers to reach 50 units per acre and I'm not opposed to that. I would rather keep Gilbert the way that it is versus simply as many residences per acre. And although I appreciate staff and some of the groups that have talked about this, frankly, I don't want to copy some other cities and look the same as some other cities. Gilbert has done a great job historically and I want to keep it that way. So that's my reason for wanting it to stay the same.
A question for Councilmember Ray. When you talk about open space, are you talking about traditional open space, green space? Are you talking about amenities such as pools and patios and so forth?
I'm just referring to the way that it currently, the way the rules currently sit for developers in Gilbert when it comes to open space.
In theory, someone who had 50 units per acre would probably have some sort of rooftop deck or something like that, does that count as open space? It does, okay. Thank you. Head nods are good, we can read lips from up here, it's totally fine. Vice Mayor?
I'm also very much in alignment with Councilmember Ray and for me, I'm open to even going vertical, more vertical to accommodate some of the more density in that. So it does give the developers opportunity to go a little higher with those projects.
So what, oh, yep.
Mayor, I'm fine with everything that Councilmember Ray said in keeping the open space available. And again, I don't think that we're creating this category 25 to 50 to provide an opportunity for developers to come in and build 50. I think we're creating this category because we have a general plan category and we need a zoning category to match that one. And I'm fine keeping that open space and the open space would calculate anything that is provided as open space patios, any green space pools, anything like that would be considered open space on the project. So I'm fine with that. I'm not a huge fan of going even more vertical, we have a vertical- We have a vertical overlay plan in place for a reason. We have specific designations within the town that would provide for verticality in building. And I think each project will come forward, and we'll see how the developers bring those forward. And that'll give us, again, the uniqueness that Councilmember Ray was referring to as projects come forward. And the density can still be built in other areas. For instance, in the HVC category, you can develop more density. So this is very specific to that, and I'm hoping that the developers that have MFL and MFM don't come at us now and say, now I want to rezone, because I'm going to be a strong no on those two, to rezone to MFH. I will be a strong no on those.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. All right, hearing all of that, I think you have the consideration of council to make the amendment as stated by Councilmember Ray. So if you want to make that motion?
Yeah, Mayor.
I'll close the public hearing first, sorry.
Perfect. I move that we approve item 37 with the change to keep the open space requirement as it currently exists.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. All right, I think that moves us to administrative items. General Plan update. Catherine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Catherine Lorbeer, Principal Planner. We have a brief presentation from our consultant to update you on the 2020 general plan process. So I'd like to introduce Matt Kleisico with Michael Baker International.
Welcome, Michael. I think you've had a chance to meet with every member of the council prior to today, so.
OK, well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Excited to be here to talk a little bit about the general plan. I know we have a full agenda this evening, so I'll try and keep my comments brief. We were last in front of you with the Planning Commission back in November, so a lot of work has gone on since that last meeting. We spend a lot of time reviewing, analyzing data, conducting meetings with staff and our general plan advisory group, looking through engagement online, as well as conducting community workshops. So I wanted to take you through some of that work this evening. As you can imagine, we gained a lot of information over these last few months. And we summarized a great deal of that information in a community assessment report. This report for all of the members in the audience, this report can be accessed online. Very, very exciting read. I'd encourage you to take a crack at it. But if you're going to look for it, you can go to the town's website, do a keyword search, 2020 general plan. That will bring you right to the project website. All the project information is there, including this community assessment. I won't take a lot of time going through the details of this specific document tonight, but the key takeaway I wanted to focus on is when we assessed all of the information and as we received feedback, one of the things that we're clearly hearing from the community is this recognition that we have to continue to create capacity for Gilbert to grow. But what are we going to do in order to maintain the qualities that drive that growth? And when we were talking with our advisory group, we heard the same sentiments echoed to us about their concerns for our vacant commercial corners and the understanding that we're getting close to build-out, and the need not only to expand our infrastructure, but to maintain our infrastructure. And then obviously, the importance of jobs. When we went to our online and our community workshops, we heard from the public, and they shared similar thoughts about recognizing the importance of jobs before houses and their concerns about multifamily, their desire for commercial development, the impacts that congestion has on the community, and the recognition of our heritage. So all of this information is very telling to us, and as we move forward in the general plan process, this community assessment document becomes very important. It becomes our reference point. It becomes our touchstone as we develop the goals and policies that the community will adhere to. So in recognizing our past and where we are today, as you can imagine, we also took time to look at where do we want to go in the future? And that really captures the notion of validating our vision. The current general plan has a vision and value statement in it, which you can see up on the screen. We took this vision and values to the community and our advisory group. And through conversations, we learned that this vision and value statement has served the town very well, and that its focus really is applicable just as much today as it was 10 years ago, just with a few minor adjustments, which you can see some of those up on the screen, of looking at the town as we're getting close to build-out isn't so much focused on growth, that is, but focused on thriving and understanding that sustainable practices are focused around being fiscally sustainable. So with the benefit of understanding where we've been, where we are today, and where we want to go, our compass is set. And within that general plan process, then we start to identify what is the structure of our general plan going to be? And as you know, the general plan and the state statute requires that it includes certain elements within the general plan that are captured in the column on the left there. Those elements typically become chapters in a general plan, and that's very similar to how our current general plan is set up. But as we discussed it amongst our advisory group and even brought this forth to the community, we recognize that these elements and their titles and descriptions don't really capture what's important to the community, or what our vision statement is trying to say that we want to be. So we decided to take a different look at the structure of the general plan and thought about organizing it around what are we planning for? And that notion is we're planning for community. We're planning to promote vibrant gathering places, protect our neighborhoods, increase housing options, encourage aging in place, and celebrate our history and culture. We're planning for opportunity to encourage job growth, maintain our infrastructure, support educational excellence, improve health and wellness, live sustainably, embrace innovation, maintain public safety. We're also planning for connectivity, how we bring ourselves together, effectively managing congestion, improve mobility choices, enhance travel safety, and plan for new technology. And really, ultimately, we're planning for our future. And so through that effort, we believe that this structure will then link to the elements that we must address, but do it in a more action-oriented way that conveys what Gilbert is about and what we're working towards. So right now, currently, we have up on our project website, and we've carried through, through the town's social media accounts, a link to online poll, as well as some online mapping exercises to get feedback from the public about these themes and try to understand, did we miss something? Do we want to change the wording on some of these? Do we want to add? Do we want to take away? And so that's what we're working towards right now with the community, is to listen to them and what their feedback is on these particular themes. And we're certainly interested to hear any feedback that the council may have. And we're in the moment in the process that we can make those adjustments. And through this summer, we'll actually be working on developing the actual aspect of the general plan with the understanding per the timeline of getting the process completed by our 2020 goal, that we will be getting into a final draft in the formal public review process of the general plan in early October. So with that just very overall synopsis, I would certainly open it up to any questions or comments that the council may have.
Thank you. I know it's been a really thorough process. Some of our council members have been intimately involved in assisting. We have added one new council member since you did the interviews with us, so I think it might be a great opportunity, and not to volunteer your time, Councilmember Yentes, but it might be a great opportunity for you to have some input into that document, because I think your insight will be valuable to the comprehensive document. It is my anticipation, I think I heard, an August 2020 election?
Correct, yes.
And we are required by state law to present this plan to the voters and have them vote on this document. So we want everyone to see value in that, but also to be invested in its success. So council members, is there anything you wish to add or questions for? Perfect. Thank you for the update. It was timely.
Great. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Catherine, and your entire team. We will move to boards, commissions, and committee reports. Are there any from the council? We have a couple items for future meetings, and that will happen in next fiscal year, because today is a special day. We have a special report from our deputy town manager, Mary Vincent. Mary is filling in for Mary Goodman. You're still in my phone as Mary Vincent, and I need to apologize to Mike for that, because you've been married for like a substantial amount of time now, so I apologize. I'm going to change that in my phone as soon as this meeting's over, so I remember that you're Mary Goodman. You are sitting in a seat that you don't normally sit in, but you look good in that seat. Tell us why you're there, and I think you have some other announcements to make.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, our esteemed town manager is traveling to a sister city that we have in Northern Ireland, Antrim, Newton, Abbey. I always try to pronounce that and almost always get it wrong. But he's going out to share some of our City of the Future initiatives. Jackie, their city manager, has asked him out, so he's out there traveling, and I have the opportunity to sit in this seat tonight. We do have a couple team members that I'd like to take this time to introduce, the first of which is Sasan Puri Tazari, who's serving as the town's chief technology officer and just joined us on Monday. So I'd like him to come up to the podium, introduce himself, and share a little bit about his background.
Welcome, Sasan. We're glad you're here.
Mayor Daniels, members of the council, very happy to be here and excited to be a part of Team Gilbert. Spent a great four days. This is my fourth day on the job, and I've seen all the dynamic things that are happening in the town and the great staff that you have serving our council and our citizens. So I'm very excited to be here. A little bit about me, I joined the town of Gilbert, left the Maricopa Community Colleges as their eight years, and served in a variety of executive roles, including CIO at Mason Community College for five years. Previous to that, I was at Arizona State University at the Cronkite School as IT director there for 11 years. And before that, I was at the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metropolitan Phoenix and worked there as IT director and computer learning director. The thing I'm most proud of is my wonderful family. I have a beautiful wife who's so gracious and such a great person. Three wonderful children have been blessed with a great family, and that's an important part of who I am in my life. So thank you so much for having me tonight.
Excellent. I didn't hear a challenge word. Did I miss it?
Oh, is there a challenge word? Flux capacitor. Is that right?
You have to work it into your speech. It's how we hate as new employees.
Sometimes I'm not quick on the uptake, so that was the introduction of myself. So the flux capacitor, I was waiting to introduce that into part of my speech. So the part of my speech that flux capacitor involves is, thank you so much for approving our request this evening. Many people don't know that flux capacitors are very important to IT operations, especially our data center, business continuity, disaster recovery. All of those things are dependent on flux capacitors. Not only are they used in data centers, the core technology of the iPhone is a flux capacitor. So it's really important technology, and thank you so much for approving it tonight.
That was kind of impressive. And I think you said a whole lot of words I don't even know the meaning of, besides flux capacitor, although I remember it from the Back to the Future days.
Did I pass? Do I get to do a challenge word for you all?
No, sir.
Oh, it doesn't work that way? OK, I just wanted to check. Thank you so much.
Bring it on. I'm ready.
Can you pronounce my last name?
No.
Not yet, but we will. Go ahead, Mary.
We have one other team member who did not receive a challenge word, so I'm not going to call her up to the podium, because she didn't have time to prep. But I would like to introduce Ava Cutro, who's our new planning manager. We're happy to have her join the team. She joins us from Paradise Valley, and we've heard nothing but great things, and she's fit in very well with the team thus far, so we're excited to have her. I also wanted to congratulate the mayor and council and all of our staff who've contributed to make Gilbert the best city to do business in Arizona, as awarded by the Arizona Chamber, which was a really exciting award to receive this week. Several efforts, including the efforts surrounding being ready for 5G and other things that have just really made Gilbert a special place to do business. Also wanted to congratulate the team who participated in a trip out to the San Carlos Apache Tribe this last, about a week ago, including the mayor, and say thank you to the mayor and council for your leadership in that effort over the last 10 years to bring us to the successful signing of a really important water lease for the community now and in the future. In particular, I wanted to say thank you to Chris Payne, Eric Brown, Hocken Johansson, Renegyan, Amy Argulis, Valerie Schaefer, Leah Hubbard Reinhammer, and countless others who have worked on that along the way. That's it.
Thank you. That was a great synopsis. Report from council on current events? All right. Oh, Councilmember Anderson.
Since we won't have the opportunity to talk about the Fourth of July in another meeting, let me talk about that now and wish the community a happy Fourth of July. But I also want to remind community members that there are legal and illegal fireworks. And I always get calls every year about, I think it's the airburst fireworks that are not legal. And I get calls about people whose livestock is irritated by the illegal fireworks, or people and property that may be damaged also. So just a reminder, please have a happy Fourth of July, but please also follow the law when it comes to the fireworks.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Great reminder. And not to prolong this meeting, but this is the last meeting of our fiscal year, and I'm always sort of struck with an amount of gratitude when we get to this time of the year, because there's so much to reflect on. And I think particularly with the award that the town received, Best City in Arizona to Do Business, which is amazing. There's 91 cities and towns, and to be named the best is quite an honor. There's some good competition in that group, for sure. But I'm always struck with a sense of gratitude for all of the work that goes into just one fiscal year. And so I just wanted to read this list, and I'll email this out to the council, because I think you guys will be proud of it as well. But this is looking back on just fiscal year 19. We launched a new vision, anticipate, create, help people, and the City of the Future Initiative. We signed that 100-year water lease with the San Carlos Apache Tribe. We kicked off our Gilbert Centennial efforts, which is next year, our centennial. We passed a public safety training facility ballot measure in November. We had our groundbreaking for that facility. Deloitte came to our community, invested $34 million into our community and 2,900 jobs. Fire Station 9 opened, and it completed our fire coverage network. In our Heritage District, we adopted our new redevelopment plan. The University of Arizona came in as an additional university building tenant with their nursing program. We put the 9.1-acre lot into a development agreement. We have our new parking garage now in the Heritage District as well. And also, the Heritage Center, which was Page Community Center, has been renovated, and it is now open to serve our residents. We updated our utility rates, which was the first time that had happened in many, many years. We rolled out new trash recycling and bulk trash schedules to mixed reviews, but I will tell you, it has improved our on-time service delivery by 113%. So our on-time service has greatly improved. We hired our first chief innovation officer and our first chief technology officer. You just met Sasan. Our open data portal received an international award. We launched a micro-mobility pilot program. That wasn't part of the original plan for fiscal year 19, but sometimes things just get dropped in your lap and you take care of them. In our parks, Gilbert Regional Park, we named it. We finalized the design. The construction is on schedule, and we had a groundbreaking for that facility. We've repaired, rebranded, and reopened Cactus Yards on time and under budget. Desert Sky Park, the design has been completed, and the ground has been broken for that park as well, and we entered into as well. And we entered into a long-term agreement with The Strand in a public-private partnership to provide Gilbert's first large-scale water park. We had an upgrade in our community rating system. I saw Pete here earlier, resulting in a 5% reduction in flood insurance rates for residents in the 100-year flood plain. That meant money back in our residents' pockets. We did a building code and land development code subcommittee. We're still working on those updates. Those are going to extend into fiscal year 20, but great, great work. It's already happened. We adopted our first ever bike plan in the town of Gilbert. We participated in the groundbreaking for the Women's and Children's Tower at Mercy Gilbert Medical Center. We hosted the Light the World Giving Machines in a license agreement that resulted in $860,000 raised for nonprofits in Gilbert. We hosted the East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast and raised a record amount for our charity of choice, Winged Hope. We hosted sister city visits from both Newton Abbey, Antrim, Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, and LaShan, China. We launched our Infinite Work Program, wildly successful, very cool. We hosted Gilbert Kindness Week and adopted Kindness USA as our official nickname. We have the lowest cost of service for all valley cities. We maintain that recognition. We were also named the top performing post-recession city of the 100 largest cities in America. We have the lowest overall crime rate of the top 100 largest cities. Gilbert's digital team was named Communications Team of the Year by the Public Relations Society of America. I think it was the first time a government agency had ever won that award. Gilbert's Office of Management and Budget received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the 20th consecutive year, and it came with a special capital recognition and special performance measures recognition. Our town manager, Patrick Banter, received ACMA's highest award in the Jack J. Dobolsky Award. The Santan Vista Water Treatment Plant was named the 2018 Project of the Year by Water and Wastewater Digest. Gilbert's Economic Development received Excellence in Economic Development awards from International Economic Development Council. And last, but certainly not least, Gilbert's Annual Financial Report received its award for the 27th consecutive year. That is a very lengthy list of amazing things that have happened. And it's because we have nearly 1,400 employees in the town of Gilbert who dedicate themselves every day to ensuring that we have the highest quality service and the highest quality community for our residents and our businesses. We're really proud of all the partnerships that we've been able to develop this year. You guys, that wasn't even everything. That's just what fit on one page for me. So there's so many more things we could have, could have, could have discussed or listed tonight. But overall, we have a really fantastic community with really great people. And I'm just really proud, especially this time of year, for all of the work that you guys have done to make Gilbert a great place. So on behalf of the mayor and council, I'm taking this authority to thank everyone for their hard work. I said I wasn't going to delay the meeting, but that took a long time, so I apologize. At this time, the meeting is adjourned. We'll see you back in August.